Building two hundred South Texas Avenue, Suite One oh six. First item on the agenda is indication pledge allegiance of the US Texas flag. And I'll leave those. Father, I want to thank you for your love and your mercy to us. I want to thank you for all the great things we have, living in the country that we have. I want to ask that Father, you will continue to keep our first responders and the military safe. We look forward to this upcoming year, Father, and pray that things that do continue to bless our country. Ask all these things in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One nation under God, one and just...
Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, consider taking action on agenda items three through twelve. Number three is to approve the hours and locations for early voting for March the sixth, twenty eighteen, Democrat and Republican primaries. I think we've got a recommended list here. Christian College, did you have some comments?
I do. I would like to modify the early voting hours to include the hours of ten AM to seven PM, Monday, Tuesday, February twentieth through February twenty-third. Our proposed does speak to the hours of eight AM to five PM. And I have reviewed the election code. And the interpretation that we have is different from that of the Democratic Party. And the concerns have come to my attention, so I am offering an alternative to what we've proposed. I'd like to offer a motion to accept the hours with the modification that February twentieth through twenty-third were open from ten AM to seven PM.
Second for the purpose of discussion.
I have a question for Trudy. And that is, how would that change affect the election workers? If we went from eight to five to ten to seven?
The election workers themselves, totally would be able to change the number of hours. The only issue I see would be within my staff, I would talk about additional... Because we would still have to be outside staff my office, those two hours that were not, you know, there are open, because that would be our regular hours.
Eight to five is your regular hours, and so ten to seven would be the additional five to seven. Would you have difficulty asking your staff to man them those two extra hours? And would that cause any hardship for your staff? Or be the dinner hour?
Hardship, let you know, I mean, budget-wise, I mean, my work, I mean, my staff already has time that's going to call you that hasn't been paid out from the winter, just because there's a holiday and everything, there is no way for us to take that. Have to get it taken. Maybe have public tasks that need, you know, we're looking at how we budgetary.
Well, again, in addition to that, I mean, I'm not sure where the interpretation comes from, but it says shall be conducted on the weekdays of early voting period and during the hours of the county clerk's or city secretary's main business office is regularly open for business, which is eight to five. That's when it's regularly open. So I'm not sure who to be interpreting that that means.
I've named the party, the Democratic Party, but there are other, just, you know, local citizens that have been concerned about that. So I'm asking that we consider an alternative for the four days. That's, that's four days. That's not the entire early voting schedule.
But the Sunday, I think, I don't remember, it's ten to...
Right.
And then the next week it's seven to seven, I think.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
And Saturday, the twenty-fourth, it's seven to seven. I don't think we've ever had Saturday's twelve-hour period.
I think that that's commendable, and I'm in agreement with that. My concern is that February twentieth, that first week, those four days, we are only open eight to five. And that is not conducive to, I think, the idea of early voting, voting at the convenience for that first week. And I do, I do and have read the code. I have the concerns that I've mentioned, and I am lifting that up to this body. I'll call for the question. You have a question.
So what you're saying is that we're going to actually be two hours of additional comp time since you're keeping your office open from eight to five? And then the two hours additional for your staff to be there for you? How many employees is that? Eight? Okay, so two hours times four days times eight employees. How, what would that amount to, actually? Okay, not just, don't have a, like, off the top of your head, roundabout figure?
May I suggest that the law doesn't say all of your staff must be available? It says the office must be open. And I would think a reduced staff is within the spirit of the, of the proposal.
It's very hard to find during early voting, when our hours are often open, our phones are, I mean, all lines are continually ringing. So to have a reduced staff during those hours would be...
Two hours per day?
It wouldn't be too difficult. Like, we all, you know, there's seven, eight phone lines over there, and they're trying to...
So I think that speaks to the need of your services.
Well, I mean, I, of course, I can remember a time when you voted on Election Day, and that's all there was. And I was happy to have...
I can remember poll taxes, too, but that didn't make it right.
Well, I mean, we got two weeks of early voting approximately, and one week is, you know, twelve hours a day. So, I mean, that, to me, that's pretty sufficient time for, if somebody wants to go vote, I can't imagine that, you know, you couldn't get it done within the hours that we're offering as it is.
Well, keep in mind, sir, that a lot, not a few, but a lot of the community will not have the freedom of going to vote between eight and five, because it's not conducive to the work environment. And that was the reason that early voting facilities and hours were recommended and then encouraged and now enforced. But I'm saying to you, eight to five is not in the spirit of early voting, in that there are many, many, many people, my neighbors, that cannot go between the hours of eight and five because they work.
Let me ask, you don't feel like the compensation of having the twelve hours on Saturday, the twenty-fourth, and the Sunday hours?
I think it's great, sir. I think it's great.
Monday through Friday, a seven to seven would compensate for that, to where people could, could be accommodated?
I think it's great. I applaud the staff for the services they provide. But to say that eight to five is early voting and appropriate for a week or four days, you know, we have done it. I have received complaints that it is not meeting the needs of those people that want to go that first week and can only go between eight AM and five PM. And that's my concern.
I would concur with you if it was eight to five both weeks, but the fact is that it's all day Saturday. There's a good chunk of time on Sunday, people who go to church can, there's three hours in the afternoon after church that they could go to. And then the second week is seven AM to seven PM. So I think the hours are adequate, as stated in eight to five on the four days makes sense because of the staff time for the election office. So...
I mean, if, I agree. If, if they were both weeks with eight to five, then I'd have an...
And that's why, Commissioner Catalina, originally I asked that the hours be adjusted. I did not want to incur additional costs, but again, the hours should, I think, be adjusted to accommodate those that...
As I would say, that, you know, something to look at. But I'm not denying anybody the opportunity to vote, it's just on those four days, I just, I don't know if we can incur that extra cost and get Trudy's staff to stay here. And that, I'm just, not for those four days.
I do disagree. I will call for the question. Who? I'm sorry?
Well, I just wanted to get kind of, in terms of a perspective, is, is what percentage of Brazos County voters actually vote during that first week? And I don't know if you, you probably don't have that statistic off the top of your head, but the last two days?
Yeah. And usually that first week, Mr., Aldrich is retirees, people that don't work and have that leisure, but the working-class citizen won't be able to, you know, they're not in office jobs. These are jobs that people don't have a lot of flexibility, so that's my concern. But again, I call for the question.
Okay. Can I perhaps make a legal point? I think what you're missing is that the election statute requires early voting from eight to five. So what you're really asking Trudy to do is to be open twelve hours the first four days on time. She has to be open by statute from eight to five, that's the regular business. Now, the question is, do you have the authority to add two extra hours to the day when it's not provided in the statute? I haven't been asked to address that, I don't know the answer to that question. But she will still have to be open from eight to five because the code requires that. So what you're, what you really have to do is add two extra hours for their first four days. And I'm not sure if there's anywhere in the legislature that prohibits that, but I'm also sure that I'm not even allowed that. But that was the question that was raised, required to...
And I have raised that question and been told that it is the Commissioner's Court that set the hours, that could set the hours. I mean, we're going to today approve the hours, so it is in the same spirit that we will approve whatever the hours are. And I, I don't have a argument that it's an extra two hours a day. I fully realize that. That is a small investment in the view of how important getting the votes out and getting people to the polls. We are concerned, not just in Brazos County, but nationwide, about the low turnout of voters. So I think if it's a big concern of ours, we're going to have to work hard to get more people out. And I will be mindful of, in the future, of this issue, and we'll try to modify the law, that's, modify the code. Because the code, the election code has a lot of problems right now. So it's not a perfect work, but we, in the process of exercising our rights as citizens, can make some changes. And that's what we will try to do. And thank you all.
Okay. Thank you. The motion, I think, was to change the hours from what it is addressed here to ten o'clock till seven, so...
Yes, sir.
Motion and second on that. So we'll need to vote on that first.
That's correct.
So just want to make sure that everybody understands that's what the motion in the second is, to change the hours from ten o'clock to seven o'clock.
Monday, I mean, Tuesday, February twentieth through February twenty-third. Okay. And to go along with the other noted hours already proposed. It's just a modification of that very first week. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Okay. So now we need a motion.
Move to approve, ask for Senate.
Do you need the location change in the motion?
Okay.
Yeah, I was looking at that, I thought it says Brazos County election administrator in office, so it needs to be the, isn't that correct?
We put them in here, sanctuary over to the...
And I think we just need to make a note of that in the motion, because that's the second. There are two, I think, orders here. One is for the time, and one is for the location. Is that correct?
What is overall, the time and location, do you have an order to move it from the admin building to the...
So in this motion, we just need to make a note that we're going to be moving the location from the admin building over to, on the election...
Three hundred East William Joe Barkley.
Mhm.
Suite one hundred.
Suite one hundred.
That's part of my motion.
Okay. Most made second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. My motion carries.
I voted in favor. Heard back from the A and M Church of Christ.
I thought I looked in that to begin, so we'll be, you have an order to move Aldrich Church and the twenty minutes to that A and M Church.
But, but that's not this time. That's later.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Thank you.
His term of appointment is twelve, one seventeen, to eleven thirty, twenty nineteen.
Move approval. Who were the other candidates considered?
John Nichols actually put in an application, but our attorneys took a look at, we had a Attorney General's opinion when, that at the time Mayor Berry was appointed to the board. We didn't ask for an opinion at that time, but after Mayor Berry was elected to be a commissioner, we asked the Attorney General, would, could you still serve on the plan board and as a commissioner? And the Attorney General said no. And when the attorneys looked at the opinion, it was probably, it might have been more appropriate that we had not even put a sitting mayor or council person on the plan board, based on the opinion that we got after that. So that's where we eliminated that John because of, the attorneys said they believed that that was a better interpretation, based on what we received afterwards.
That's so sad, because I think Mr. Nichols would be a great representative for us, but thank you for that. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. My motion carries. Number five is acceptance of donated property and unclaimed clothing, miscellaneous property left by inmates leaving Brazos County jail.
Move to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Contract eighteen dash one zero two R road signs and signpost with Vulcan. Move for approval. Second. Most made second in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. My motion carries. Number seven. Approval of Treasurers Report for October twenty seventeen.
Move approval.
Most made second in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number eight is budget amendments. Budget amendments FY seventeen slash eighteen fourteen point one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Personnel change of status, but we don't have any changes. So I guess we skip number nine, and then number ten is payment of claims, and we don't have any claims to this week, and so we'll move to number eleven. Well, let's see, maybe we'll skip eleven for, and go to number thirteen, sure support on inmate population. Wayne?
Fourty-seven, seventy, in the last twenty-four hours, four hundred and ninety-three of those males, seventy-four women, twenty-nine on the bottom range of seventeen and fifty-one.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne. Number fourteen is announcement of interest items, possible future agenda topics. Hearing none, we move number fifteen is call citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we'll go back to number eleven and convene an executive session for Sunix Texas Government, code five five one point zero seven four, to discuss personnel matters. Work, candy, attorneys, I don't, Jennifer's off today.
Okay. So we don't need her.
I think that's a budget we may, or you may go in. And the time is ten twenty-four.
You can now see it, huh?
Yeah, I can read it.
Okay.